Have one person signed up, Adrian Bishkov. Adrian, welcome. Oh, that's okay. Go ahead and go ahead and sit down.
Okay, thank you.
We do four minutes, and this is a chance for you to talk, you know, talk to council and raise concerns or issues. You can thank us for stuff, too. That's okay. We like that. But yeah. Just state your name. You don't have to state your address. That's on the form here, and we'll start the timer.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Adrian Bischoff. I moved here from Arizona a year and a half ago with my two little kids. Heard amazing things about the Sherwood School District, and so I'm really happy that I've got them enrolled there. This is an issue that I'm sure is more suited to the school board and the school district. But it's concerning enough to me that I feel like I have to share it in any public forum. And that's what I consider to be a lack of security, of basic security measures. My students just attend Archer Glen, so I don't know what the other schools in the school district do for security measures. But back in Arizona, in the elementary school district there, or the elementary school, all of the doors remained locked. There was no unlocked door that you could walk through. If you wanted to get in, you would have to buzz in. They had cameras. They'd ask you, you know, your nature, nature of your business there, even though most of them at that point, you know, knew me or knew other parents, but they still followed that protocol. And from what I've heard from fellow parents who go to different school districts, they follow the same protocol where all of the doors are locked. You have to be buzzed in. There's security cameras. I asked, so I was struck when we first enrolled in Archer Glen and saw that out of the four doors to get in, three are locked, one is open. And sometimes the, and then you, you're in a vestibule, and you can still walk through those doors and then through the second set of doors. And then sometimes the reception office is locked, sometimes it's not. And I asked them, you know, I'm kind of curious, why is there one door that remains unlocked? And I was given two answers from the staff, including the principal. One was that they want to create a feeling of welcome. And then the two, the second one was they didn't have the money for it. And both of those reasons seemed to me not satisfy, not, not reasonable to not do that. I don't want to go into, obviously, the, you know, the horror stories and then concerns as a parent, because we're all aware of those. But in terms of feeling welcome, I think that it's the staff who create that feeling of welcome, which they excel at, not the building, whether it's locked or unlocked, that creates a feeling of being welcome. The fact that there's an issue with cost really concerns me, because I can't think of something else that's more important than protecting the children who are at these schools. They have told me, the staff there have told me that they, they can't afford a buzzing system to let people in. And that even when they do, that the current buzzing system that they have, they can't use it that often, because it's not meant for continuous buzzing in of people coming and going. The staff has also said that if they needed to lock down the school, that the buttons to do that are actually not at their desks. They're kind of around the corner, which, you know, delays starting those safety approaches. So I'm just kind of lost and concerned about how I can share my voice. Obviously, I'll do this with the school board, and I'm sure this is nothing new to the, to city council. I've only been here for a year and a half, and I'm sure many of you have been here for much longer than I have. I just felt like I needed to share that and just ask for whatever help you can in helping increase safety measures in the elementary school district. Okay, that's it.
Thank you so much for coming in and sharing your concerns. And I can tell you, we take the safety of the schools very seriously. We have our chief here. He's nodding his head yes, and, but I would, I would highly recommend, because there's, we're separate agencies, highly recommend you talk to, go to a school board meeting.
Definitely.
Reach out to the superintendent. I will pass on to the superintendent that you were here.
I appreciate that.
What you talked about. But thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thanks. All right. Do we have any other citizen comments? Chief, can you see, don't see anybody online? Anyone else in the audience like to give citizen comments tonight? No volunteers? No? Okay. We will go ahead to item seven on our agenda is presentations. We have the Korean Eagles Taekwondo National Touring Team here tonight. We're very excited to have you guys here tonight. And I think we have someone that's going to come up and talk about it a little bit. Now, you don't actually tour with them, but you're hosting, right?
I'm just a groupie. I get the bags and stuff. Thank you for having us here.
Oh, yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is John Lacy. I think I could tell you where I'm from. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm John Lacy. I'm the owner of Musa Martial Arts in the Sherwood Plaza, and we actually opened in 2011. So I've been here for a while. First, let me say thank you for letting our team be here, and then I'll give you a little history that ties into the presentation that we're doing. And that way you guys will be ready to embrace the Korean Eagles team. So I moved to Oregon from California right before my freshman year of high school. And just the long story short, I was depressed and I didn't fit in and I didn't have any friends. Karate Kid, you know, if you've ever seen that movie, that's me and Daniel's son. We're pretty much one and the same. But I was able to find Master Lee, who is not wanting to be pointed out, but I'm going to point him out. There he is.
Hello, Master Lee.
So it was, it was fortunate, because he was just opening up a school near Sunset High School in Beaverton. And I was intimidated to go to any martial arts school, but I was able to find his school. And since there was nobody else at the school, it was less intimidating. So I think I was one of his first students or second students, but more than that, he gave me a place to basically find my identity through martial arts. And it was mainly a vehicle for me to gain confidence and, and just learn about myself and have a thing and, and go and make friends and get out of that slump that I was in. And so I enjoyed it. And with all humility, I excelled in it, and I decided that it would be a good idea to go to the Olympics. So I started training for the Olympics, but unfortunately, I was in an accident and I got brain damage. And so I was hit by a truck and I had to go to Legacy Emmanuel for five weeks, and I didn't know anything. So I had to learn my mom and my dad and how to walk and breathe and talk and do all that stuff. But on a happier note, Master Lee was the first person I recognized. So we had been spending a lot of time together, and that's when I started coming around. And the doctor said that I wouldn't be able to do the Olympics again, because I shouldn't get hit in the head. But Master Lee said, why don't you come and start teaching at my school? And so I found out that through teaching, it was a great experience. You know, when you see the kids, especially, you know, the youth excel in those things, it's just the best thing ever. So being a teacher was 10 times better than any gold medal that I ever won. Speeding up to the Sherwood side, I was fortunate enough to, I think, I, it's not chance. I found Sherwood. I think it's God, and here I am. And my wife, I met my wife at a martial arts school, and my wife's name is Shannon. We were fortunate enough to open up our own school here and just get embraced by the community. And it's been here for us through everything. And, and COVID shut us down almost, but you guys pulled through with me. And just the riding the wings of Sherwood, we've been able to keep going. But recently, we got a offer from an international demonstration team that tours the whole world. And it started in 1994 with Director Park. And since then, they've been touring from Seoul, Korea, you know, the second or third biggest city in the world. They come from a district there and they get to travel. And I thought it would be so cool to share this with all the people in Sherwood. And so we're so excited to be able to come and, and perform and share it with the kids, because honestly, it's just a blessing. It's just a blessing to be here. And the more we can share that and love and, and show these kids that are working at such a high level, you know, just what's possible when you push yourself and, you know, perseverance and all the skills that you gain through martial arts. So they're going to be here demonstrating tomorrow, and it's a free event. They're going to be at the Sherwood Center for the Arts. After we spend the day teaching at Hawksview Elementary, we're going to teach there all day and then do board breaking and stuff. I, I'm a little behind on inviting everybody, I think, but I want everybody to be there. Hopefully, everybody can make it to the big event. And this wonderful team is going to be performing their hearts out and continuing to share culture with Sherwood. And everybody's raising up in Sherwood. We're all rising together and tackling all the odds and just growing as a community. It's, it's been awesome. So here's the team.
What time is that tomorrow?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock tomorrow night, Sherwood Arts Center.
Seven PM, Sherwood Arts Center. Again, it's free. Everybody's got seats waiting for you. We got, they got their performance. That we're going to show a little bit tonight, but due to liability issues, maybe we just get them certificates and welcome them to Sherwood. Doors are open at 6:30.
I shared the event on the four largest social media groups in Sherwood.
Thank you so much. And it's just, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Renee's been a big help in helping me coordinate it. And I know Tim's going to try his best to be there and do some speaking at the event. I'm just, this is great. It feels like the Super Bowl to me, so we're all going to sit there and watch the winning team. We'll all be voting for the same team, and there won't be any, you know.
I vote for the mayor to try to break a board. I feel like.
That goes without saying. He's going to do it.
So my twins have broken boards at, at your business, so I think that counts, right?
It counts, because now you have a gateway map for how to do it.
That's right.
You'll be ready when we grab you from the audience.
That's right. This is amazing. Thank you so, so much for helping bring this great team to our town. You may have noticed you had some, a little goodie bag on all your seats when you came in tonight. So we thought we'd share with you some, some stuff from the city of Sherwood. Those bags are for you, if you hadn't figured that out yet.
Those are all yours.
Those are yours, yes. And that's just a thank, a thank you from us for being here and, and sharing your culture with us. But we also have some certificates we want to hand out.
Yes, sir.
And I'm imagining you'd like a big group picture with all of us and all of them.
Of course.
I think we should all go down there for this.
I feel like you guys should all be in it. Let's do this.
Are they, are they going to do anything tonight?
We could. I don't, we could kick both of the boards.
We talked about it's a liability issue.
So real quick, before you do that, though, I do want to say, so here in Sherwood, my son, who was younger, as young as these little ones, started Taekwondo here in Sherwood as well and got a black belt. And the reason we started him in Taekwondo was because he was too angry too often. And we, we wanted him to learn not only the, the discipline, but his teacher, Master No Ryan, said, okay, well, you have to get your teachers to sign off and your parents to sign off that you're behaving properly at home and at school and all these other things. And I do remember, he also had to learn Korean. He had to learn to count in Korean. He had to learn to, you know, I remember him coming home and saying, Anyang was how he would say hello to us. I hope that's hello. Anyway, and so Taekwondo has made a similar difference in my life as well, because he's a phenomenal. He's 22 years old now. Anger is very much under control. And I attribute a lot of that to Taekwondo and to the masters who helped them, helped him, you know, control that energy kind of growing up. So thank you very much for coming.
Oh, thank you. And Renee is actually a black belt, too.
I'm not going to get and mess with her. No, but John, you're an incredible teacher. I love watching what you do with the kids. And so thank you for giving me the honor of working with you for this project. And it's such an honor to see all of you here tonight. I can't wait to see what you do tomorrow night.
Thank you.
What have they been doing since they've been here?
That's it.
I saw you loading up the van, going somewhere.
So we picked him up actually last night. We got into town about 10:30, and then we have hosting families. So a lot of our students have taken them in to their house. And so all the students, the younger, between 10 and 16, have a house that they're staying in. One, no, not here, but there's also the Airbnb that's right down, this right next to Symposium, took them in for the masters group. And so they stayed there then. First thing, we woke up and we went to Coin Six.
Oh, that's right. That's when I saw you with Ally.
Yeah, Ally. And the funniest thing about Ally is I was so nervous to do this, you know, I'm still nervous to talk to you guys. And I looked up and I think I know this girl. And then they say, Ally. And I say, Ally Osborne? She said, yep, that's me. I'm like, oh, I know you. So she was one of my students from 10 years ago. So it was much easier to talk to her after I, I found that out. But yeah, just being in Sherwood this whole time and, and seeing the kids grow up, and now they're all adults. They have jobs at Coin Six. And so they were, they were lucky enough to do that. And then they requested to go to Nike. So we didn't get into Nike. We just drove around Nike and stood next to some logos and took pictures. But that, that's exciting. We're hoping also Langer's Fund Center. We got big events for Thursday, and we might be able to stop in at the YMCA. Just trying to take as much as we can in. We're going to have a Breakathon, which is a fundraiser for the Share Center. So we're going to have like a fun run where people will pledge per board broken. And I want to make it a city event if I can. You know, I'll try to open it up to all the kids to try to come and break boards, just to raise money for, for the Share Center here, to give it all the, the families in need. I'm not, you guys are familiar with the Share Center. Yeah.
Awesome. Sounds like a fun week.
Well, thanks again, John. Did anyone from the team want to say anything?
I'm guessing probably not, because the one who speaks the best English is shy. But I'll open it up to you guys. Does anybody want to say anything?
All right.
All right, well, let's go down. We have some certificates, and we'll get a picture.
It's been fun.
Fulton Straw or something.
All the place in Sherwood. They don't need to leave, they don't need to leave Sherwood.
Fulton Straw has. All right, well, go, go ahead and get going. Thank you again, everybody. And we are off to item number eight. We have a public hearing tonight. Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to receive testimony on Resolution 2025-011, adopting a supplemental budget fiscal year 2024-25 and making appropriations. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report. Questions, if any, by the city council for staff. We will then receive written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the council, followed by council discussion. This is the first hearing for the city council on this item. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision that statement applies to ordinances. A second, I'm sorry. However, in accordance with the city charter, the council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing on a unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and submit it to the city recorder prior to the time the public hearing is open for testimony. The mayor will recognize that people who wish to speak and any comments must be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and place of residence for the record, as this hearing will be recorded.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with our staff report. David?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In front of you is a resolution for a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2425. Supplemental budgets are very common across all municipalities here in the state of Oregon. They're allowed under Oregon budget law. Typically, the city does one to two a, a year. In future years with buying a new budget, we might see more that second year, but right now with the annual budget, we do about one or two a year. And so the first one I wanted to kind of walk through is the general fund. The additional beginning fund balance, you know, every spring we go through our projections, we try to pinpoint where we're going to end the fiscal year. And, you know, it, we, it's our best guess where we're going to end. The general fund came in a little over $70,000 more than what was projected. The police department received a, a grant for, to help pay for evidence van, $45,000. And we're looking to transfer in additional $81,410 from the community investment fund to assist the police department career cycle planning. That $81,000 is made up of interest earnings, so we're not looking to touch the principal in that community investment fund. So the total additional to the general fund is $197,123. We'd like to increase the administration appropriation by $66,362. What that is made up of, of two things. One is a $55,000 carryover, and that is just a project or upgrade of our financial system. It just crossed fiscal years. And additionally, our auto, auto property and general liability insurance came in $11,362 higher than what we budgeted. Also, we'd like to increase the public safety or the, the police budget by $130,960. This is made up of multiple things. One of it is made up of $25,000 for a drug detection machine, $24,550 for the MHRT program that the sheriff and the undersheriff are here just presenting last council meeting. And additional $81,410 to help the, the chief for the plan for those upcoming retirements. Some of this money, we're having to pull out a contingency, and this is where, in contingency is where all that opioid money has been residing. So far, the city's received $141,000, little more than $141,000 in opioid settlement funds. That money is projected to come through, through 2038-ish. They're estimating around there. And so the Clark, the clock starts to tick from the minute you receive that money. You have five years to either spend the money or encumber the money. So we started receiving this money in 2022. We found some uses that would assist the police department. So we'd like to pull out $109,550 out of contingency, so the police could use it for the drug detection machine, machine, pay for the mental health response team, and cover the difference in that evidence van that they're looking to purchase that they'll utilize. I'm not going to speak for the chief, but, you know, there's been a, a talk of, you know, whether it's educational purposes going around to various schools, educating the public on, you know, the dangers of opioid and fentanyl, the drugs that are out there. And there's just a remain, also, we're going to increase the Public Works Operations Fleet budget by $105,000, and that's just the price of the evidence van. And the remaining for $4,351 is just going to go to reserve for future years. The public art fund, I spoke about this during the Budget Committee meeting in December. There was a timing of when that roundabout art was going to be done. We project, we thought it was going to be done last fiscal year. It's actually set to be done this fiscal year. And so there's an additional beginning fund balance of $113,501. With that, we're allocating that out so we can spend it on the roundabout art. And that's just adding to the already budgeted dollars that we budgeted during the budget process. Community Investment Fund, beginning fund balance came in $506 more than anticipated. Interest earnings are doing very well in that fund. And that has to do with last budget season. We just didn't know the timing of those interfund loans that we talked about during the budget process. Those are starting to occur, but we still had six months of earnings well over 5%. And we talked about, we'd like to utilize that interest earnings to help the, the chief and his department, because public safety is very important to us all. We are going to be pulling out a little bit of money out of contingency. Just, you know, we still have six months more of interest earnings, so we are going to meet our interest goals into that investment fund. But we'd like to utilize that additional interest, as I said, to help the chief. And the additional $506 just reserved for future years. The General Construction Fund, this is another fund where beginning fund balance came in higher than projected. This was just timing of the projects. Cedar Creek Trail, there's some various projects over there that were occurring, and most of them occurred over the summer. And so the additional $237,000, we're just allocating down to the Capitol Department just to pay for the, for the rest of the, or the portions of that project that were expected to be done last fiscal year, but they occurred over the summer. And the Street Capital Fund, they saw a pretty large additional beginning fund balance, again, timing of projects, a little over $1.7 million. I know something that's real, really important to the city council, and part of your goals, is, you know, safe routes to schools. There's a project over there on Sunset of pedestrian safety. And with that, with that additional $1.7 million carryover fund balance, we'd like to allocate $375,000 for that public safety project over there on Sunset. And the additional $1.4 million just reserved for future years. And with that, I'd like to open up the questions for city council.
All right. Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
Just on the, on that last one, the $378,000 for the Sunset, that's the total price tag to redo that?
Timber. Is that what we're talking about?
Timber. Yeah, I'm surprised it's so low, honestly. I, I thought it was, that's a.
Don't jinx it.
No, I know, I know, but that's why I, I gotta just double check the number here.
Red's on. That red is good on that one.
All right. So that's just the intersection of Sunset Tremble. It doesn't do anything with Woodhaven in Sunset. It's just that intersection. It's really replacing what we applied for for safer routes.
Straightening out the crosswalk.
Straightening out the crosswalk, updating the ADA, some rapid flashers.
Okay.
That's what's, that's based off of.
Great, okay.
We're installing another rapid flasher.
Do you have a question?
What was this question?
Any other questions? I, I have one. Actually, it's, someone in the community must have heard one of our other meetings, and they ask what career cycle planning was. And this is a, because you brought it up as part of this, and maybe it's a better question for the. And this is a, because you brought it up as part of this, and maybe it's a better question for the chief, but if you could explain that, why that's such a great thing.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a plan for our foreseen retirements or exits of our officers. Uh, because we know that it takes twelve to fifteen months to hire and get somebody up on the road. So uh, the idea was for us to get somebody in the agency and get them through the training and get them through the academy. Hopefully, as that person is retiring, we're able to onboard the new person. So we don't have these big gaps where we've had before. Because traditionally, we would have to wait, for example, somebody retired on December thirty first. We could then start a process on January one. We wouldn't see that person active and on the road until the following year. So we're just trying to minimize that gap. So it's been a great program to really shrink that for us.
It reduces overtime and we have better coverage.
Yeah.
Fewer gaps.
Yeah, and burnout, to your point, you know, because then we're asking the officers to work a lot of overtime to cover that.
Awesome. Thank you. That I, oddly enough, I had someone ask me about that and I was surprised that out of all the things we talked about, they zeroed in on that. But thank you for that explanation.
I have a question on that as, as well. I didn't, hadn't we planned for some of that already in the budget? And so we needed additional, this eighty one thousand is additional?
Do you want, or do you want me to talk?
No, I think you can explain.
Okay. Yeah, no, we'd already planned on it. Some of this money had already been spent in, in the prior fiscal year. And so combo that with the additional money that we've already planned in the budget, plus this additional eighty one thousand dollars. We fa- we factored it, it would allow the chief to hire a couple individuals for about six to seven months, you know? So that's not the full coverage he's needing, but it's, it's helping to get to cover that retired, those upcoming.
So we hadn't planned for all of it in, in the bu- at the time of our budget.
No, we didn't plan for all of it.
So the prior money was for the four or five that we knew were going in the last couple of years.
Have more.
And then now we have another three that are coming.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, uh, do we have any, uh, written testimony? Anybody online? I don't see anybody in the queue. Um, so we'll go ahead and, um, but we'll open the public hearing. We don't have anyone in the audience like to give testimony. And we will close the public hearing. Um, any additional questions for staff, especially by the council? This is a resolution, so we can approve this tonight. Ordinances normally are ones that we, we don't, oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
I do have a couple of comments about this.
Yeah.
With the contingency money, the opioid settlement funds, I, I don't agree with how they're being spent. Um, with this budget resolution. The evidence van slash outreach van, um, as an equipment purchase, I think should come from a different source of funding. Uh, it doesn't seem like that's in the spirit of the opioid settlement money. Uh, same with the drug identification machine. Um, I think that we should be focusing on, um, addiction triage and treatment. And I know that we don't quite have the funds to have our own services here in Sherwood, um, possibly, um, partnering with county. I know that we've previously voted as a council to not do that. Uh, I'd be interested in revisiting that. Um, but that is one section of this that I, I don't agree with the change in the budget.
Great. Did you, um, um, great points, by the way. Thank you. Do you want, are you inter- we could, when we get the next tranche of money in, do you want to? We could have a conversation at that point? Maybe a work session or something to talk about that.
Sure.
Yeah, it'd be fine. Unless, unless there's energy in the council to do something different tonight.
I don't know about that, but I, I'm a little unclear on what this van is. Can you go into more detail?
Yeah, so current, uh, currently, we have no means for us responding to crime scenes, overdoses, deaths, anything like that where we needed a bunch of equipment. Um, this van is going to be, it's going to serve a lot of roles. And part of the drive with the opioid money was because we're seeing a lot of fentanyl overdoses. The risk and exposure that we put our officers at, um, the ability to take a, carry P P E to carry a machine. And let me explain about this machine is um, because it is expensive, you're able to take it and put it on the packaging of any narcotic and it'll tell you what it is. So we don't have to accidentally open this thing, have any physical exposure, any inhalment of it. Um, so with the, with that, that's, that's incredibly important, especially in the ever evolving opioid world. I just saw today, uh, a whole new thing and how it's being introduced, uh, to children. Um, so I guess to speak to that point and then on the van is, it just allows us to get there. Um, I think we're right now investigating two, maybe three Lynn bias cases. Those are federal overdose cases where, um, we work with some of the local narcotics teams to, um, work backwards on those to figure out what's going on. And so I tell you that because when we come and we got to triage these things, we need places where we can collect evidence. We can have a legitimate source to store our equipment and do the job we need to do. Coupled with that, we're able to go out, obviously, and utilize that in the off times with community events because it has an awning and we can sit out there and talk and we can educate and we can do some of the things that I think are important when speaking to the community about what's going on, because people ask questions. So that's kind of what drives that. And, uh, the, the, I guess the benefit of this is, um, we did look at what a lot of the other cities are using this money for. Um, they're using it for a lot of the equipment. They're using it for the mental health resource teams. They're using it for a variety of things where they have this nexus that we can address some of this crisis. Um, so the benefit again is we got forty five thousand dollars in a grant to kind of offset that because we knew asking for a hundred thousand dollars is it's a big lift, but it's, we're trying to piecemeal and be as creative as we can with the resources. So hopefully that helps.
Primarily used.
It.
Drug. Situation.
It's going to be used just for, it's an evidence van. It's, our evidence tech is going to be the one that, I mean, she's going to utilize it to go to the lab. She's going to be using, utilizing it to go to any crime scenes where we need to collect evidence and, and do those things. And then uh.
Totally. So any kind of crime.
Any kind of crime where we, where we need evidence collection, yes.
But, yeah, so there's, there's two things that I heard in what you were talking about, though, that address councillor Stanki's concern, though. One is, would it make a difference in how, how you handle a situation by identifying the drug? Does that, is, does it get identified like, you know, while you're deciding? How do we do, or, you know, what are we going to do here?
You mean the, the, the piece of equipment that we want?
The, the machine that identifies.
Yeah, so that, that would be separate. That's going to be in probably a supervisor's car. They're going to go out to the scene, um, when we have a suspicion, it's a traffic stop, whatever you, you name it. They'll be able to identify it. Um, also, when we go to overdoses or suspicious deaths and we got to kind of figure out what's going on there, um, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
And so to have that ability to quickly identify what we're dealing with um, is, is really important so that we can now gear up appropriately. When I talk about P P E, um, you know, it's, it's just getting the right equipment in the right place so that the officers can gear up if they need to, or they can, they can call on the other resources that are going to be necessary.
Yeah, and I, and by the way, I agree that to protecting our officers should be part of our normal city budget. If it is, how do we react to this possible opioid situation or possible, you know, and if this machine's helping us determine that, then I would be okay with that. Um, and then the public education piece of it, right? Where, um, you know, you're sitting at Robin Hood Festival. Frankly, if you were to tell me, hey, here's what fentanyl comes in or looks like, you know, or, or whatever. That would be very helpful, I assume, in saying, in helping educate parents because it wasn't, at least, I don't know if it was a thing when I was a kid, but it was, it was certainly not, uh, like, and, and so you could tell me, you know, this this blue ball is fentanyl. I'd be like, oh, okay. I, I have no idea what it looks like. So, so that education piece hopefully would address hopefully stopping people before it becomes a problem. And so is that the goal of? I mean, I know you're for collecting stuff as well, but is that part of the reason why you're able to justify about half the cost is?
Yeah, I mean, it's a multi-pronged approach.
Okay.
I mean, because we're, we're going to utilize it for the education because we're going to take it to the events.
Yeah.
We're going to utilize it when we're on scenes. Um, it's, I would rather see us use it in a, a variety of different ways rather than park it there and just periodically bring it out. I mean, we can use this, uh, like I said, in, in a lot of multifaceted opportunities to educate.
Yeah.
And, and to promote, and to your point, as I said earlier, I mean, I just saw some things come out today that you just can't keep up. I mean, w- we can't keep up with the evolving world of fentanyl. Everybody knows what marijuana is. Everybody knows now that it comes in CBD or, or liquid or you, you can whatever you want to do in, in a variety of different ways, you know, some of the old standby cocaines and, and crank and meth. The nineties and two thousand epidemic we had, but fentanyl is like, it's changing from liquid to pills to candy. Uh, so, yeah. I, I, I guess to answer your, your question, counselor, yeah, we're going to use it. Um, I understand the concern. I mean, uh, rightfully so. I just, you know, trying to utilize everything we can, um, as we get out there.
Oh, yes.
Oh, uh, a couple of things, um, for the the drug identification machine. I understand that and I support that for the safety of our officers because my understanding is sometimes you can just even touch fentanyl and it's.
You can absorb it through the skin or you can inhale it.
Right. So I think protecting our officers and any other people on scene, not anybody, you know, on scene. Um, and then the twenty four thousand five hundred and fifty for the M H R T. We already pay for M H R, so are we getting additional services or is this?
So one of those, so, um, we know that our mental health response team has a nexus with a lot of drug addiction. Um, and, and so it's, it's a great way to support it. Um, there are other agencies that are using, utilizing that money to support it, um, to take some of the burden off of an agency such as us and use that money to pay for that clinician because that's what we pay for with Tiger and Twolleton.
Is this for the county one?
This is for our South Cities one.
The South Cities.
Yes. So that money would just come back and allow us to utilize the opioid money to support that team. It's not going to be ongoing. It's just, at this point, it's just the one.
Money up in the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, still, okay. And then.
And that's what I have issue with. It's that it's hard to be funded under something else. We don't need to be using that opioid, which is like the settlement happened because people were being addicted and dying from this, like having money from our general fund freed up or something else. It doesn't make sense to me with this money.
Oh, David, I have a question on the, uh, the, so how long? Is there any predictability in the amount of funding we're going to get over time? Because I would argue that this is, this is one time in essence, and it should be used for one time type expenditures. I'm just curious what?
Yeah, they're projecting that, that this funding is going to come through, through, till about two thousand thirty eight is what the state of Oregon, kind of reading through some of the documentation. So in about three years' time, we received about a hundred and forty one thousand dollars, a little more than a hundred and forty one thousand. So kind of multiply that out by the years. We're going to see a steady stream of money here till about two thousand thirty eight. I mean, I think some of these cases are still caught up in the courts, uh, not all of them, I don't think have settled. Uh, don't quote me on that, but I thought I remembered some were still hung up at the Supreme Court, but that was last year. I haven't really paid much attention to all those cases, but it seems like some are getting settled, still continuing to get settled. I think some are going through bankruptcy, some of those companies, so kind of the bankruptcy courts.
Yeah, I might agree with councillor Stanki on I think the van, I'm fine with that and I'm fine with the identi- the drug identification machine for one time things to help with this process. But if we're already paying for them, that M H R T, unless this twenty four five, five fifty is going to give us more M H R T time and not just, I understand we're always trying to free money up in the general fund, right? General fund's always constrained with things, but we're already paying for that of the, out of there and we get something more with this twenty four five fifteen.
I, I know, oh, you want to go ahead or do you want?
If, uh, the twenty, if the M R T stuff, you don't want to fund that with this money, we won't fund it with that money. I mean, it's just an option we're bringing to you that could be spent on this. We don't have to spend this money on them. So it is covered in the general fund. And it was just an option that it was an eligible expense with other places are actually spent.
No, I, I get the why. I understand the why. But then this sits and we still need to spend it within three more years or two more years or.
It's every time a dollar comes in the door, the clock starts. Yeah, so it just, it's a revolving clock that just starts, um, every time that money.
The first clock expire and how much money is left that, that would be on that clock.
I don't have that exact, but it's.
That'd be good to know for the next time we have this conversation.
Yes.
We have forty thousand dollars that has to be spent by this date and then the next forty two has to be spent by this date, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I know the one challenge and we are trying to get creative, uh, this is an option, whether city council wants to move forward with it. Um, you know, the, the one thing is that, you know, that we, we did talk about the general fund was balanced by eleven thousand dollars. We approved a sergeant contract, which was more than eleven thousand dollars. So we're trying to get creative. Okay, how can we help get us to the end of the fiscal year by getting creative of, well, can we use some of this money? For the M H R T program, thus freeing up some of that, some of that money that was already budgeted for that to assist the police department covering those salary costs. So.
Yes.
Um, Mayor, I appreciate, uh, Dan's, uh, comment when I have a conversation, um, for this year, I'm supportive of the, of the expense for this year, but I'd be very open to a conversation about how we could spend these dollars in the coming years. I don't know what op- what other options, um, people will suggest. Um, certainly on, on board with hearing it, hearing it out and talking about it.
Yeah, maybe having a work session or at, at least sending something out to council. I, I think we've talked about this. I can't remember like what the approved uses of the money was. I can't remember all the options there are, but maybe that can get sent out to us again. For, for future conversations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think it feels like we should, we know there's a steady stream. We know there's, every bucket comes in, there's a clock of expiration. It would be great to know the details of that, like a rolling, rolling it forward, you know, every year. And what we could use it for. And then we can come up with a policy plan that says here's how we would like to see the money used over the, the next, next number of years. Here's the things in the, that are approved that we, we would want to focus on. Here's the things maybe we don't want to focus on. I think in general, I agree with councillor Stanki that although, and we've often done this, you know, freeing up restricted dollars and making them unconstrained dollars and, and I, I'm generally supportive of the budget creativity in that. I think um, there are certain areas where the money is, is supposed to be used for a specific purpose. And I think it's important to not just follow legally what's allowed, but also, you know, kind of the spirit of it. So I agree with that. But I think that's, we need to have that conversation and we need to outline what our desires are and, and you all have direction to follow. But I agree with councillor Bates that for, for the here and now, I'm, I'm good with moving forward with, uh, this budget, res- a budget, supplemental budget as, as written.
Renee, do you have any thoughts?
Still all circulating in my head. So that, it's an interesting point that you brought up and thank you for doing that. I think I'm with the rest of them as well. That for this instance, moving forward with it as it's been stated, but given us the opportunity to be more strategic about it going, going forward, having some more of those deadlines and when it has to be used by and such. But it's definitely gives me pause for pause. So I appreciate that insight.
I think as councillor Stanki, um, was talking, I don't know what programs or what is even available that we can put these funds to, to help, um, battle the addiction, the mental health crisis. Um, so probably things we'll have to think about for, for the future.
Wondering if there's some curriculum, well, a long time ago, I used to do some drug prevention work in, in Indiana. We ran a program for fourth through eighth graders about staying away from drugs such and anti-bullying. I wonder if there's some sort of curriculum that might be available to us where we could spend some of the money for. That might be available to us where we could spend some of the money for to really educate the kids. On what's coming at them now that they might not know know about for safety purposes.
There certainly is school curriculum for that that is evidence based and kind of goes away from the abstinence based or the like the dares to say no. It really is educational for the kids, and I would be happy to spend money towards supplementing that for the school district.
There was some good stuff. It's been a while since I've been involved in it, but anyway. Might be something to consider.
One more comment with the evidence fan. In prior meetings, I don't remember if they were executive session or not, and so I don't want to. Mispeak in public here, but there was talks of funding for that from additional sources that. The police department was going to potentially receive at some point. And if that is the case still, that potentially, if we do go ahead and vote for this, that we float the money with this money now. And backfill it with the funds that would potentially pay for that that we initially talked about.
So we we have to upfront it under the grant we got in forty five thousand dollars. I'll be coming back in at our emergency management coordinator.
Okay.
Successful getting. So we just have to upfront the hundred and five thousand and then it's a reimbursement.
Right. So paying for it now, I think I understand that part, but we just talk about from the interagency. Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's public or not, but potentially using that to refund, because that's what we talked about originally using it for.
Yeah, I don't I don't think that's an executive session item, but you're talking about the the federal DEA seizure.
Correct.
Dollars, because we have an officer on that team, we occasionally get to partake in that. So I I have no problem with that concept. I think it's great. When I think, when I think about this, I. There's a prevention side of this, which I think you're very interested in addressing. There's a. There's a crime scene side side of this, which I think is very valid too, because we need to protect our officers and have the tools to process those crime scenes. I also think there's there's a. Well, that's the first one, the education piece, but I think the that's the prevention. Yeah, but the but I also think there's this middle ground and you kind of alluded to it where you're responding to an overdose or something like that, knowing what you're dealing with. Value there as well, but I think I'm in general agreement. Let's move forward, but let's set up some time to sit down and talk. About what that policy looks like. You know, what, you know, Dan, to your point, we don't really have a program, so how could we spin something up? You know, what's realistic? Do we partner with schools? Is it something? Add on to our SRO program? There's all kinds of options. We just have need to have those conversations. In general, though, I don't also don't want to micromanage our chief. I think. I trust that you're making good decisions with this, but we just need to have a conversation.
I think Craig alluded to it before, and we were just, and even David, we're just, you know, obviously, we're just trying to be. Fiscally responsible in a sense of managing our budgets and what are some of the opportunities? I know the DEA money is out there, but it's just, it's not like what we know.
Constantly scrambling to.
Yeah, it is. It's it's kind of like plugging holes. And so it's, you know, just trying to be. Creative and and utilizing, you know, all the resources and so. Obviously, it's at your direction, but those are some of the things that we had come up with that we thought, number one, we knew identified as a need for us. And, you know, and then how can we get there?
It, well, we can we can see for a, I have a bunch of questions, but they're more when we have that. Session. So it sounds like there's will to move forward. We're just all agreeing we're going to have some follow up meetings to talk about the policy and. What that's going to look like, what kind of programs we can put together.
Or not. I mean, I I think there, I think I think we can. Be creative and 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 having a good, healthy conversation. I mean, I have I have ideas. I'd love to bounce off people and. Like Dan does too. Awesome.
All right. Yes.
I move, we approve resolution twenty twenty five zero zero one, adopting the supplemental budget. Physical year twenty four twenty five and making appropriations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All those of in favor approving resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero one, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty. Twenty four dash twenty twenty five and making appropriations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two noes. All right. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
And Sylvie, did you get the who the nose word?
Yes.
Yep. Awesome. All right, city managers report.
Just a couple of things tonight. You approved the Schaumburg sanitary line under consent. We had bid openings. The actual true cost of that project, six hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty. With a fifteen percent contingency, so that comes to eight hundred and one thousand eight forty nine. Just because when we did had to have stuff turned in, bid openings come a little later on that. I didn't want to. Not getting into the politics of what's going on, but I did want to report that. We were a part of a fifteen million dollar grant with Twalton and other cities that Twalton is actually running. It was for electric vehicle charging station. We were notified that that's on hold. So just as we move forward, that project's on hold till further notice. So. Just wanted to give everybody an update on that.
Those be charging stations for the public or for like me, this ones?
It's for the public.
We get to charge the public or using it?
When they plug in, they pay.
They pay, they plug in.
And that was, that's that came from an executive order that was handed down at federal level.
That's the only thing we've been notified so far on any grants, so just to keep you up to speed on that. That's all I have tonight. Unless you have questions for myself or the department.
Sorry, just a follow up question. How many charging stations is that going to give us?
I I don't have that answer. How many it was going to, it's actually City of Twalton who actually applied for it. We were just part of it.
We just signed on to it.
Yeah, it's a long time. But I could probably get that information.
I'm just curious if it's, how many, how many dollars was it?
Fifteen million.
Spread across three cities.
Well, that there's some, I don't know if, I think the state was part of it too.
Curious. Any other questions for Craig? All right, then we will move on to council announcements. Taylor, I think it's your turn.
All right, the only announcements I have are for the high school theater and choir. You've got the play that goes wrong, February seventh and eighth, thirteenth to nineteenth. And then choir has their fundraiser, the Broadway bit, so you get to see little. Short toe tappers from Broadway, January twenty ninth.
The fun one.
That's a very fun one. Yep. And you'll see my daughter dress up like Snoopy.
And you get to vote.
And you get to vote, yeah. It's a very interactive thing. And then, of course, tomorrow, six thirty. Everybody should announce it here to make sure that people hear it. The art center, I want to see the. Grand team that we just got to see do board breaking. More than that. Move in all sorts of ways that I'm way too old to move, so.
Doors open at six thirty and start at seven. Uh, let me see. I attended several different meetings. Not nothing of real substance to report. Water consortium meeting is. The first week of. February. It's coming up, but I think that's all I have.
Awesome.
Hope everyone took time to enjoy the holiday yesterday. Part with King and. Had a CEO board meeting of WACA, nine one one services. Got a budget preview, shared it with Kristen and Craig already and put to pass along the tie, but. Sherwood can expect to have news increases to WACA in the neighborhood of nine percent. Year over year from a. It's a it's a combination of number of radios, number of calls taken in the in the area. Is always interesting. Rising costs on all corners. That's all I got.
Planning commission did not meet since last time we met. I wanted to address a citizen comment from July sixteenth. Susan C came to the meeting and discussed the Ice Age Trail alignment. There was some concern that it was being shifted. Just wanted to let her know that we have looked into this thoroughly. I've talked to my staff several times and it is still going to be on Tonquin. In fact, the developers who are helping that area right now are paying a fee in lieu or. That trail whenever it is. Built. So what funds are being allotted, it is going to happen on that where it was originally proposed along the well in there. And then one last thing. The Sherwood annual puzzle competition is happening again this year, February twenty second at ten AM. The on sale for that starts January twenty fifth at sherwoodarts.org if anybody's interested. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to thank Craig and staff for a great goal setting session between the last meeting and this meeting. That was really productive Saturday that we had here. I attended last week the chamber meeting at the YMCA, which was a really good, nice format where the. Broke out and said some breakout sessions to for the YMCA to gather some information from community members on. How they might be able to improve services to our community or what people were looking for. It was, it was, I liked that. Different type of meeting that they had. On Monday, I attended the West Side Economic Alliance Legislative Reception with the mayor. We had six of our local representatives and senators there just kind of given as they were heading into the long session, giving updates and bills that. Things that they were going to be working on. It's not really a great format. There's so many of them trying to all answer the same question. We really only. Got through two questions, so but.
Saying they like to talk a lot. Maybe.
Yeah, maybe, but the benefit of that before that is really the networking that you do prior to that with all the other attendees and. Whatnot. And then also, Dan talked about Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, but. They, before the puzzle tournament this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they have their final weekend of their theater production called Something Rotten. You might see a bunch of giant props like a fork and a spoon, and my husband made those in his garage. So, oh, and the fake bread. I made the fake bread.
Fake bread? Intriguing.
Fake bread.
It's got some good deal.
Well, yeah. Okay, I have just a couple of things. We had a WSCCC meeting, Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting last week. I got elected chair of the WCCC, so I think that will be helpful for us. You know, we just finished the cycle and the latest round of mistip funding for transportation projects, so we probably won't see another one of those for three years. But they are going to be working through this year. What the funding mechanisms look like going forward, which I know sounds a little bit ominous, but. We'll be, we'll be working through that with the WCCC. And for those listening, that mistip is a tax that voters approved back in the nineties. That's part of your property taxes to go to Washington County, and it's meant to pay for transportation projects in the county and the.
The county network.
For the county network and the WCCC is basically all the mayors from all the cities in Washington County. We we prioritize and decide what those projects are and make those recommendations to the county commissioners. So it's an important process and it's a unique process in the state and a lot of other counties are very jealous of us.
What roads is that program built, Mayor?
Well, there's lots of, there's one you're hinting at. Do you want to say it? No, it's Washington, it's Twalton, check Twalton Sherwood, the expansion of Twalton Sherwood is being funded by that. The traffic circle over by the high school was funded with mistip dollars, and we are in the pipe to get about, don't quote me on this. Fourteen million dollars for a complete street program on Edie Road to get that up to safety standards. So it's the latest allocation. So now we're working through the process of when that money actually comes. Got to get in line, hopefully get first in line to make that happen. I was going to say the goal setting session was was great, but you're, no, that's fine. We had last Saturday. It was awesome. I thought it was one of the best ones we've had to date. Our consultant did a great job and and we had some really good conversations.
Missed the bonding exercises.
We decided to have a special meeting and do that later so you could be there. Anyways. So that was a great session. As Kim alluded to, the long session is starting up in Salem, so we're going to be pretty busy. Working with our consultant CFM as legislation is rolling through there, making sure our voices are heard. And Salem's not, as we all know, Salem's constantly preempting local control on a lot of issues, so we're constantly fighting that paddle. And I think that's all I got. Anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? All right, we will go ahead and adjourn our city council meeting. And we will roll right into our U R A board meeting. Eight fifths will commence at eight fifteen PM. January twenty first, twenty twenty four, so I'll go ahead and call that to order. Sylvia, roll call.
Chair Rosner.
Here.
Vice Chair Young.
Here.
Member Brous.
Here.
Member Maze.
Here.
Member Scott.
Here.
Member Giles.
Here. Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sylvia. On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items, approval of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, U R A board meeting minutes. And B, approval of January seventh, twenty twenty five, U R A board meeting minutes. Do you have motion?
Consent, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Citizen comments. Sylvia, do we have any citizen comments? And I see we have none, and since it's only employees in the audience, unless you want to give it to. You like, no, no, okay. Awesome. We'll move right into public hearing. Sylvia.
The Sherwood Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors will hold a public hearing this evening to receive testimony on. U R A resolution two zero two five dash zero zero one, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five. And making appropriations. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff present a staff report. Questions, if any, by the Urban Renewal Board for staff. We will then receive written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing and other comments from the public will be heard. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the board. Followed by board discussion. This is the first hearing before the Urban Renewal Board on this item. Generally, the board will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. If you wish to speak, please fill out your request to speak form and submit it to the city recorder prior to the time the public hearing is open for testimony. The board chair will recognize people who wish to speak and any comments must be addressed through the board chair. When you come forward, please state your name and place of residence for the record as this hearing is recorded.
All right. Thank you, Sylvia. All right, staff report. David, you're up again.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rosner, board members. It's going to sound like a broken record, but as I stated before, Oregon municipalities. Are allowed under Oregon budget law to make or to. Conduct supplemental budgets throughout the year. That could be from additional resources, additional carryover fund balance, unexpected expenses. And the U R A has two funds. One is the operations fund, one is the capital fund. I'm going to start with the operations fund. Additional beginning fund balance, seven thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars. Property taxes, we've spoken about this at the budget committee meetings, but I just want to reiterate to the, anybody listening to YouTube land. That we saw a little bit over fifty percent growth in assessed value, and that was not what I originally thought or projected. It. Blew away my expectations. So additional property taxes about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You combine that with the additional carryover, carryover fund balance, we have additional resources in the operations fund of. Four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. And what I'm proposing is now transferring that additional proceeds out to the capital fund so we can continue on with all those various projects. And I know the city manager, he spoke about this when you were talking about the art for the bridge, that. Property taxes came in higher. We're going to transfer those resources over to the capital fund to pay for the. The public art for the bridge. And for the capital fund, additional beginning fund balance came in less than what we projected, but that's just timing. We have some large projects going on over there and it's all depending on contractors when they get out there, weather. But then you add that in with the transfer in of four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. We're adding. You know, minus that, you know, fund is fund balance, the capital fund, a little over three hundred and eighty six thousand dollars in additional resources. They're going to be allocated down to the capital department just to continue on with the the art, the bridge, Ice Age Drive, all the various projects that we have going on. And so with that, I will open up for any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, David. Any questions?
Great news on that. The acceleration of the growth of.
Yeah, even the consultant, when he came in at that work session, he was, he was surprised because he was a little. Hesitant when we originally went down this plan and about the aggressive approach, but. Exceeding everyone's expectations. exceeding everyone's expectations.
Any other questions? All right, uh, was there any written testimony, by the way? Oh, okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We have no one online. I assume we have no public. No one's filled out a form, no one in the audience. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, all right, um. Board members, um, any discuss uh additional questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain.
I just want to use the money to get I C H Drive in. Start making money over there.
That's right.
I will make a motion to approve U R A resolution two zero two five dash zero zero one, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five and making appropriations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting U R A resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five and making appropriations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. And with that, you are done and adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
You.